There we go.
All right.
Welcome, everybody. We are very excited to have such a full house this evening. We have... Excuse me? Did they turn it up in back? Okay. Okay, we'll start over. Welcome, everybody. We're excited to have a full house this evening. We have scholars and musicians, as well as a number of dedicated service and staff to our Carmel Clay Schools, and we are thrilled you're joining us, and we are very excited to present some very special awards. As usual, following our special presentations, we will take a break to allow people for to take pictures and to maybe head off to more exciting adventures, instead of sitting at a board meeting, and then we will continue on with the rest of our meeting. I do see a number of new faces this evening, so I just want to give a little update on how we do our meetings. Our meetings are in public. We do have public participation at our general business meeting. It's not a Q&amp;A, but we will have public participation, so people have an opportunity to share their thoughts. We have a number of presentations, and if you want more information about our meetings, it is available on our website, and we also have some pamphlets on... It's hiding at the moment, but on the front desk there near the exit door. We do have pamphlets that talk about the meetings and all of our meeting dates and times as well. So with that, we are going to get started. Ms. Katie?
All members are present.
Thank you. If you please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin our special presentations with the Math Bowl State Math Bowl Champions, and Ms... There she goes. Ms. Courtney Taylor is going to be taking pictures in between each one of the presentations to capture the moment.
Thank you. Well, good evening. It is my honor to invite Mrs. Jennifer Shuhai up to the podium to recognize the 2018 State Math Bowl Champions of West Clay Elementary School. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Shuhai.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Thank you, School Board, for inviting us. Mr. McMichael, thank you very much. I'm Jennifer Shuhai. I'm the principal of West Clay Elementary, and I have the honor of being here tonight to introduce you to the Math Bowl champs for our district and for the state. We were number one in our division. So these are the West Clay Wolves Math Bowl team, and I'm going to turn it over to our coaches, Suzie Butts and Doug McQuarrie, so they can introduce you to the math scholars.
Well, we have some very future mathematicians, and I always want to throw out that the competition is sponsored by my favorite Purdue University, so we are looking forward to seeing all of these inspiring engineers and physicists heading off in that direction, as they all are rolling their eyes at me. These guys meet and we practice after school, and we work on it during class, some problem-solving skills, and they're put into teams of four, and they compete, and they work collaboratively with each other to answer some questions, and they did great. As Mrs. Shuhai said, yes, we did win our district here in Carmel, and we did place first in the state, so that's quite an honor for these young individuals. So if you guys would stand, and when I call your name, we'll pick up a certificate, and we can line up in front of the board. Elijah Burdesang, Emerson Cardona, Nina Ferroichi, Jake Gardner, Maxwell Guti, Henry Joliet, Rocky Lee, Anna Liao, Ava Liao, Jasper Luick, Ava Lau, Mira Musaki, Sophia Pei, Anjali Prasan, Brian Tian, Ayush Singh, Anisha Singh, Magna Sebapu, Cooper Terry, Emily Wong, and Evan Ritter.
Come on, Douglas.
And now I would like to invite Mrs. Deanna Pittman, the principal at Carmel Middle School, to honor the Carmel Middle School Show Choir.
Thank you. Thank you, School Board, for having us this evening. Carmel Middle School Show Choir has had quite the successful competition season this year. We have an amazing, talented group of young men and women. They sound amazing. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you Mrs. Tricia Scheides, our Show Choir Director. She'll be telling you a little bit about their success and recognizing the students.
Thank you, Mrs. Pittman, members of the board, Dr. Dudley, and Mr. McMichael. This Show Choir season was very exciting for the members of Class Act. The group was made up of... is made up of 47th and 8th grade performers, six crew members, and a band of 11 students and adults who competed at three competitions this year. At each contest, they were awarded grand champion and also received caption awards for best vocal and best visual performance in the middle school division. At the final competition of the season, all of the groups in the middle school division were eligible to compete in the evening finals with the high school show choirs that were recognized as being from smaller schools. This extra opportunity is not offered at any other contest that I know of personally, and just to make finals would have been a great accomplishment. To make the long story short, our group not only qualified for finals, but were named grand champion of the small mixed high school division and received the honor of best vocals. I could not be prouder of this group of students standing before you today and other members of the group who are not present tonight. To me, they embody the mission statement of Carmel Clay Schools. They realized their potential, took advantage of every opportunity that they could, and pursued excellence at the highest level. Right now, I would like to recognize the performers who have been in the group for two years, and all of these students are in the 8th grade. Natalie Aaron, Nathan Andrews, Ellen Dantino, Carson Empe, Lily Featherson, Christian Fisher, Garrett Goodrich, Griffin Haran, Riley Haran, Andrew Mullenix, Timothy Page, Sean Reeves, Graham Seaver, William Spanenberg, Allison Walwender, and Alexa Walquist. Thank you so much.
Now I'd like to invite Mrs. Melinda Stefan, our college and career counselor at the high school, to honor our students that had a perfect ACT score. Mrs. Stefan?
I think you need to save those applause for the students that we're going to recognize, for sure. Thank you, Dr. Dudley, Mr. McMichael, members of the board, and members of the audience. It is on behalf of Dr. Harmis and Carmel High School, it is my distinct pleasure to recognize three CHS seniors who have earned a perfect ACT score this year. The ACT is a standardized test that reflects what students have learned throughout high school and provides colleges and universities with information for recruiting, advising, placing, and retention of prospective students. The ACT is comprised of four multiple choice sections: English, mathematics, reading, and science, as well as an optional writing section. The score range for the four multiple choice tests is 1 to 36, and the composite score is the average of the four test scores rounded to the nearest whole number. The students we've recognized tonight each earned a perfect composite score of 36. To put that in context, over 2 million students take the ACT nationwide each year, and less than 2/10 of 1% of testers earn a perfect score. So in other words, these three students are in the 100th percentile. At this time, I would like to recognize and congratulate the following students for earning a perfect ACT score. Rishi Das. Blunt DeVries. And representing all three, Bo Cindy. I am quite certain that you all join me in wishing all three of these students well in their future endeavors, where they're likely to contribute... continue to impress those with whom they come in contact, as well as contribute in significant ways to their chosen campuses and their careers. Thank you for your time.
And now we have Mr. McMichael. We have several employee service awards that Mr. McMichael is going to honor our employees.
Thank you. Yes, we actually have 60 employees this evening that we're very excited to recognize that have been here for 20 years, up to 45 years, and so we're quite pleased to recognize these employees. So first, I'll begin with our 20-year service awards, and the first is LeAnn Bentham from Woodbrook, Michael Bostic from Forsdale, Kristy Cloud, Educational Services Center, Mark Cole, James Davis. Let them catch up here. William Decker. Lori DeGraff. Janet Distel. Ron Farren. Jeff Frizzy. Kathy Gray. Tracy Green. Carolyn Hayes. Jeffrey Hagnauer. Anne Hep. Chris Bosway. Ladeka... or Sandy Ladeka. Elizabeth Lyonsberch. Amy Morrison. Darlene Newton. Jill Noel. Kathy Olson. Patricia Pimentel. Mason Price. Kathleen Schrod. Cindy Sensman. Heather Stevenson. Diane Todd. John Travison. Cecilia Trenshaw. And William Weghurst. So those are our employees with 20 years of service. Okay, and now we will recognize employees with 25 years of service. Our first employee is John Bannon. And John... I'm sorry, Brian Getz. And Nancy Gilpin. And Jennifer Gossett. And Jeanette Higgins. And Andrew Heimlich. Michael Holloway. Arthur Hoyt. Margaret Lehman. Ann Luke's. Marlon Moore. Toni Morris. Christine Meyer. Michael Poet. Paulette Riley. Barbara Schmidt. Jay Volley. Leslie Ward. And Greg Wilson. And now we'll begin recognition of our 30-year service awards for employees. The list is getting a little shorter. Our first is Marvin Creach. Michael Escher. Kathleen Farren. Robert Holman. Linda Lutz. And Kay Sharp. Okay, and now we have two of our employees, both from Carmel High School, that have 35 years of service. And so the first is Annette Lichty. And Michael Wyatt. Okay, now we have one employee that has 40 years of service with Carmel Clay Schools, and that's Daniel Bates from Carmel High School. And we have one employee with 45 years of service. And that is Lily and Tickle at Carmel Elementary School.
We're going to suspend the meeting for a few moments to allow individuals an opportunity to snap some pictures, or if they'd like to head home, they're welcome to do so, or you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Okay, we're going to resume our meeting at this time, and the next portion of our meeting is public comment. Tonight, as in all nights, we reserve 30 minutes for public comment. Seeing that there are so many wishing to share their comments with the board, we will have two-minute time periods that will be set. On the podium, there's a little box with three lights that'll illuminate. Green means your time has started. Yellow means you have 30 seconds. When your time is finished, the red light will pop on, and there'll be an audible beep, and at that time, if you are still speaking, we hope that you will finish your thoughts and have a seat, so somebody else has an opportunity to share their thoughts. This is a public meeting, and it's important to the board that we all are respectful of one another. Please keep in mind that if you cheer and comment, you do eat into other people's opportunity to share their thoughts as well. So with that in mind, please be respectful of others wishing to share their thoughts. When your name is called, please approach the podium, share your name and address for public record, and then you can begin speaking. Tonight, we will begin with Laura Moore.
I'll mess up your computer. My name is Laura Moore. I reside at 1527 Orchard Park Drive North, Indianapolis, Indiana, in the Orchard Park neighborhood. It says, "My name is Laura Moore. I'm a parent of four Orchard Park Elementary students, a resident of Orchard Park neighborhood, and a teacher of Carmel Clay Schools. I would like you to know that I am not mad about our recent events. I'm just disappointed. I'm disappointed in the poor communication. I'm disappointed in the flawed data, and I am disappointed in the potential dispersment of our Title I resources at Orchard Park Elementary. First, I'm disappointed in the communication gaps that occurred last week. The memos sent to Orchard Park families on April 13th only listed operating cost population and enrollment, not closures. The two-hour link showed the board simply workshopping multiple scenarios. They did not give stakeholders the necessary information to properly prepare for the Orchard Park Town Hall session. Second, I'm disappointed in the data collected in analysis. Based on the statements of the superintendent at April 18th meeting, unnamed demographers used building permits to project declining enrollment. Let me explain why that method just doesn't work on my street. From 2007 to 2017, the 16 homes on my street went from four students attending Orchard Park Elementary to 19, an increase of 375%. Unlike the building permit projections, this snapshot represents a demographic transition of the Orchard Park Elementary's fully-developed neighborhoods. Third, I am disappointed in the potential dispersment of the Title I services offered at Orchard Park Elementary. We have 23 languages serviced at OPE, and the highest free and reduced lunch rate at 24% compared to the district average of 7. Due to our high percentage, we have a full-time licensed Title I teacher that supports our struggling students, so they can be accessible in our regular curriculum offered by our elite school system. Our neighborhood doesn't have a pool. We don't have a clubhouse. We don't have a library, but we have our school. Stop. Listen to us. Hear what we are saying, and reconsider the options that are being presented. Please don't disappoint me any further, and save Orchard Park Elementary.
Christopher Moore? Christopher Moore?
My name is Christopher Moore. I live at 1527 Orchard Park Drive North. Again, my name is Christopher Moore. Stand up silently if you support Carmel Elementary and Orchard Park Elementary. and Orchard Park Elementary. I'm frustrated now in this belief that the April eighteenth meeting at Orchard Park Elementary was not clearly advertised by Carmel Clay Schools as a potential closure of Orchard Park Elementary. To me, this is unfathomable. As a parent, I am saddened that this was not communicated to the community in a way that they could truly voice their opinion. I demand that the co-supervenants have another meeting at Orchard Park Elementary. I believe that Orchard Park Elementary's students, parents, and staff deserve a true opportunity to voice our opinion at Orchard Park Elementary before a final decision is made. Also, give us two weeks' notice so the community can actually plan for the meeting. OPE is a vital part of the Home Place neighborhood. Home Place was just annexed by Carmel, and now CCS is actually considering closing this highly-successful school that has received an A grade by the Indiana Department of Education on multiple occasions? This school has been successful for fifty-plus years, as I'm sure you know. Three of my children received Title I assistance at Orchard Park. Dedicated teachers like Mrs. Moyer, Mrs. Corich, Mr. Bushley, Mrs. Shorner, and Mrs. Schulenburg, who taught several of my kids at OPE, helped my own children become successful learners, and I'm grateful for that. Renovate OPE, and continue the well-attended, successful events of international festivals: literacy night, Taste of Carmel, winter holiday concert, Kendi 500, and the tremendous art program, as you can see here. Also, don't close the school that won the Project Eighteen Award from Peyton Manning. This school beat out five hundred and fifty-two schools to win this prestigious award. Renovate Orchard Park Elementary. It is the right choice to make.
Stuart Drake.
My name's Stuart Drake. I live at fifteen fifteen East One Hundred and First Street. I am woefully underprepared to follow that up. Incredibly impassioned, and I certainly applaud that. My family took over our family's house. My grandfather built the house that we're currently living in in nineteen forty-eight. Our family has lived there for the last seventy years, and we want to continue to live there for seventy years. The reason why we decided to take over the homestead from our parents and from our grandparents is because I get to cut through my woods, cut through Orchard Park, and walk my kindergartner to school every day. I have a two-year-old at home, and in three years, when this proposed redistricting is going to take place, he would walk with his third-grade brother and I to school every day, and it scares everything out of me that that might be taken away from us and our family. There are two things that Orchard Park can offer us that the other schools in Carmel just simply can't, whether we're bused or whatnot, is Orchard Park has a socioeconomic and ethnic diversity that you cannot find anywhere else in Carmel. It's not to say that Carmel isn't diverse, but what my son sees on a regular basis is not what he would get in Fishers, in Westfield, in Zinesville, or any other community that we could possibly look at. I understand that enrollments declining and increasing, and kids are constantly shifting around, but it feels like the only two options that we've been proposed are a closing of Carmel and Orchard Park. And what I see is, I see potential to build in the West and a potential to redistrict in the East, an area that is declining and is constricting, where the Central has stayed steady, incredibly steady, across the last seventeen years, where there are schools in the East that have declined every year for the last seventeen years. You have four schools that have the lowest percentage of enrollment that are all together, that could be consolidated to three, and it should be considered by the board. Thank you.
Justin Kemp.
Justin Kemp, one zero two two zero North Delaware Street. I am the proud father of Isaac and Elliot Kemp, Orchard Park class of two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-five. I'm here because there's been discussion of potentially closing Orchard Park Elementary. Roger McMichael has provided charts, statistics, and demographic forecasts to convince our community of the need for consolidation. So we face a challenge typical of our generation. Will we allow statistics and forecasts to shape our values, or will we use forecasts and statistics as a tool to reinforce the values of our community? Orchard Park is the only elementary school in Carmel along the Monon Trail. The past two Fridays, my first-grade son and I biked to his school. This is the essence of the bike-friendly community Carmel is developing, and it will be threatened by the closure of Orchard Park. Regarding the data, I'm concerned we're putting too much faith in projections that lack any variances, standard deviations, or confidence intervals to account for potential fluctuations. Already, the total in elementary enrollment was one percent higher than predicted, and OPE specifically was two-point-eight percent higher than expected this current year. OPE enrollment is the highest in four years and larger than the two thousand ten-eleven year. I live on Delaware Street, south of one oh-third. It's a dead-end street that's difficult to drive on, because every afternoon, there are so many kids between four and ten riding their bikes. Please keep their school within biking distance.
Lauren Gartenhaus.
My name is Lauren Gartenhaus, and I live at one one nine six Hellford Lane. I am a sophomore on the Carmel High School women's basketball team, and I have been blessed with the opportunity to play for Coach Winland, starting in the seventh grade on the Carmel Travel Team, and I have been a member of the program ever since. On Friday afternoon, however, I received a text from one of my teammates that displayed a screenshot of an email from Dr. Dudley and Mr. McMichael that stated the search for a new basketball head coach was beginning. I was shocked to see this, just a week after the parents and players of the basketball team received an email from Dr. Harmus stating, "After analysis and deliberation of input provided from players, parents, and community members, that Coach Winland would be the head coach for the twenty eighteen nineteen basketball season." I was devastated to see that Coach Winland would not be the coach, because over the course of the four years I have known him, Coach Winland has grown to be not only my coach, but a leader, a role model, and a teacher for me. In fact, just three hours before he was fired, he was in the gym with me and one of my teammates at seven AM, helping me with my shot, which shows the kind of person he truly is. He is willing to do absolutely anything for his players. He is willing to take the high school and middle school players to countless team camps over the summer, when some coaches may take their players to only one or two. His office is always open during lunch, SRT, before and after school, or any other time you would need him. During the season, I have watched countless practices and games from the sidelines due to an ACL injury. I have seen him as an excellent coach, teacher, and role model who works tirelessly. He creates an environment where hard work pays off, as is demonstrated by our varsity team finishing another winning season while also being sectional champs. We were so appreciative of Dr. Harmus and his staff for conducting his thorough review of the program. The initial decision echoed the twenty-five-plus players who supported him. However, just a week later, that decision changed without an explanation. We do not understand why he was fired. Several of my teammates and I were shocked to hear the news, because this team means so much more to us than just basketball. It's raising money and shopping for families in need at Christmas. It's having a coach who cares so much about you that he asks you to text him when you get home when the weather is bad. It's about having a coach who has the freshmen, JV, and varsity players and their families to his home for taco night to kick off the season. Coach Winland clearly stands apart from other coaches, as you can see.
Thank you, Lauren. Yara Batista. Yara Batista.
I'm Yara Batista. I live in fifty-eight fifteen Blue Stem Court. I'm a junior at Carmel High School. I have been playing six years of volleyball, in five in which I had the pleasure and honor to be coached by Tamiya Bryson. I'm a proud volleyball player at Carmel High School. However, the program has been broken for a few years. Many coaches have come and went in the span of short seasons. Tamiya was the first coach to treat players according to who they are, not their status in the court. However, throughout the season, everyone was aware that some of the players were a problem, many of them who disrespected us and when we kept quiet because of their statuses. This isn't the case now. Tamiya is an excellent coach, and numerous of players and parents can attribute to this statement. Her motto is, "Let coaches coach and parents parent," and this was explicitly said during the team banquet before the season had started. Throughout the season, many of us were benched. I was included in one of those. However, I did not quit the team despite of how much I wanted to. I knew it was the right choice. I did not have enough confidence to be playing, and the other one just had a horrible attitude. Someone needed to bench them so they can learn how to play as a team. Tamiya was one of those people who did that. This is just one of the many examples I can tell you how Tamiya is great at her job, and has done nothing wrong throughout the season. We are here to express our concern towards this situation, but seeing an amazing coach being fired based on little evidence, biased data, and research does not translate Carmel High School mission statement. I understand that Tamiya might not be rehired, and that's a shame, but our main goal here is to raise awareness that things that have been happening and put a stop to this. Her firing and adjustment unfair. Our ninety-five percent of the team were not heard, and before the decision was made. We are still trying to get our voices heard. However, we were shot down by many people throughout the school. We are here to decrease the fear and increase trust among of all Carmel Clay School community. Thank you.
Avery Lamb.
My name's Avery Lum. I live at two one four five Mustang Chase Drive. Again, my name is Avery Lum, and I am a senior at Carmel High School. I was a part of the volleyball program for the four years that I have attended Carmel, and they have gone through five coaches. Coach Bryson has been a part of the Carmel Clay Athletic Program for more than twelve years with an unblemished record. She has led multiple team bonding activities to bring the team together to compete at the highest level. She has demonstrated the Carmel High School goal both on and off the court. Not only was she an addition to the coaching staff on teaching us about volleyball, but she has also taught us life lessons that we will carry on in our future. She taught us teamwork, leadership, being punctual, and most importantly, being accountable. The four voices that were heard for the release of Coach Bryson went without investigation. More so, one had quit the team four months prior to the allegations. I asked myself, why is it that four girls could speak their minds, and yet, when I decided to write the petition, I was told I would have to get a thousand signatures before I was heard? Enough is enough. It's time to change the culture of the program and stop the enabling. It's time to put our personal feelings, friendships, and biases aside. It's time to do the right thing and hear the truth. Thank you.
Stefano Batiste.
My name is Stefano Batista, and I live at five eight fifteen Blue Stem Court. I'm a senior at Carmel High School, and I have had the honor to be a part of the swimming program for all four years of my high school career. Tonight, I am here to share my experience of what a united team looks like, hopeful to help establish the same culture in the girls' volleyball team and the basketball team as well, and all the other teams that have suffered a similar situation. First of all, all members of the team, with no exceptions, must understand that he or she is a part of something bigger than themselves. One must let go of individual selfishness and focus on the team as a whole. In swimming, we like to call this the "we-not-me" mindset, just like Chris Plumb would say, our coach. In addition, each teammate must hold one another accountable to their actions. You know when it becomes a part of your culture, when the teammates call each other out for actions that will not benefit the team, before the coaches even say anything about it. For instance, just last Friday at practice, a teammate started complaining about how hard practice was, and another teammate instantly shouted, "No sympathy groups," which is also another idea that we live by. But in order to accomplish that kind of behavior, every member of the team must be on board. Having my sister in the volleyball program and many friends, I am aware that an outstanding coach, Tamiya, who has all these ideas in mind of what a united team should look like, and many more, was fired with no apparent reason, and the school failed to justify this action to the girls on the team, in which the majority loved having Tamiya as a coach. A selected few, who did not like Tamiya, claimed she was too strict and expected too much from them. In my opinion, that simply means those people were not ready yet to embrace the idea of "we-not-me." Tamiya was trying to change the culture of the team, and that is no small task, and no one said it was going to be easy. However, it is expected that the school would support it, not shut it down. Thank you.
Michelle Lum.
Hi, my name is Michelle Lum. I live at two one four five Mustang Chase Drive, and I am the proud mother of Avery Lum. I remember the day when my daughter came home from school after hearing the news of Coach Bryson's termination. My daughter was grieving over the loss of this coach to the volleyball program. My first reaction, besides consoling her, I said, "What? Again? What is going on at your school?" Yes, it is true that in four years of her high school, Carmel, Coach Bryson makes the fifth coach to be let go. We tried going through the proper channels of the AD, the principal, Dr. Harmus, the superintendent, only to have these doors closed upon us. We don't have all the answers, but we do have a lot of questions as to why. Why is this happening? Why is this being allowed? What is the common denominator? So now we are coming to you, the board, to help us get the answers to our questions. Thank you.
Jane Sigler.
I'm Jane Sigler. I live at five eight one five Blue Stem Court. As all other parents and players, we stand here today trying to help. We don't want to bring up and tell you what your service is. We just want to try and discuss that what we are trying to bring goes beyond volleyball, basketball, or swimming. It is about education, responsibility, and good citizenship. You may already know the background of story of how Coach Bryson was fired at the end of last year without proper investigation. The team is composed of thirty-five players, and the idea of one girl who quit the team in the middle of her season was the one that really stood up. I prepared here a timeline, when the girl quit the team, when the team kept going on, when the fire happened, and I want to bring other questions as well. What I keep asking myself is, if the principal really wanted to learn more about the case, why he did not talk to the other girls of the team? After the fact, an army of young girls feeling that this was unfair and deciding they wanted to be heard, still tried to reach Mr. Skimp, Dr. Harmus, but they would not be heard. They tried several different ways to get signatures, petitions, texted each other, sharing their frustration. What did they get? Ten minutes with the principal? No. How does this translate the idea of a culture center in the student? As being a college professor, I read hundreds of college applications and also write many letters of recommendations, and I want to leave the board with four questions. If the girls' parents were so upset with Coach Bryson's behavior, why did they wait four months to come and talk to the school's principal? Was Coach Bryson fired in the proper way according to Carmel Clay Schools' guidelines? Are these kind of behaviors part of school's culture or aligned with the school's mission? And what intrigues me the most is the Ivy League University who offered the schoolgirl who quit the team a scholarship. Is it aware of the student-athlete's behavior? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Tom Leonard.
Tom Leonard. Tom Leonard.
Good evening. I'm Tom Leonard. I reside at 14265 Barlow Drive. I'm here this evening on behalf of the junior varsity, varsity basketball players and their parents. We are here this evening in support of the process and decision rendered by Dr. Tom Harmis and Assistant Principal Karen McDaniel, which was communicated via letter to us as parents on April 13th. The overwhelming majority, as in 87% of the current 23, the 87% of the 23 current junior varsity and varsity players and parents, again, oppose the decision to overturn Dr. Harmis's original communication. And we are asking and demanding a transparent democratic review by the school board that is open to the public with expectations this decision be overturned if a majority of our community favors the same. It should be noted that with the exception of a few, the freshman players participating at the high school level and their parents are not included in this statistic, nor are the hundreds of kids and parents participating in the middle school level, the Carmel Elite, Carmel Pups, and other forms of basketball that Coach Winland actively coaches and participates within our community. Everything from the beginning to the end surrounding this process of determining the fate of Coach Winland screams foul. The issues at hand were held at bay until the conclusion of the season. If there is a smoking gun, if Coach Winland's style or behavior was so egregious, why were we as parents not approached during the season so that we could make informed decisions concerning the well-being of our children? Why? Because there was nothing egregious and no smoking gun. And given the fact that I have 10 seconds left, I again ask the board to conduct an open, transparent review, stop the immediate search of a replacement coach, and do what's right in this situation. Thank you.
David Wiley.
I'm here to address the potential closure of Carmel Elementary. My name is Darcy Wiley.
Darcy. Sorry about that, Darcy.
What's that?
Sorry about that. It looked like Davy. My mistake.
Okay. I reside at 255 Third Avenue Northeast. I'm standing here tonight on behalf of a strong enthusiastic group of citizens in central Carmel. In the few days since this proposal was introduced, we have taken to the streets and of our town to make citizens aware of the school closure conversation and to ask for input. So far, we have collected a few hundred signatures, connected with several hundred people on social media, shared our vision with local media outlets, and begun drafting or sending the first of our letters to the school board. In downtown Carmel, we've connected with business owners, builders, city planners, realtors, and taxpayers from various life stages. All agree that we need to help keep Carmel Elementary in the middle of our town to keep Carmel thriving. As you know, Carmel has been named number one best place to live in America on two different national lists in recent years, in great part because of the connectivity of our city centered in our arts and design district. Our elementary school is a vital part of that, allowing downtown Carmel to be the total package of walkable amenities. It makes sense to keep our elementary school near the district's high school, library, the thriving city center, and emerging midtown area. In support of our belief on the issue of walkability, we've provided you with a copy of the most recent WalkScore.com stats on each of the Carmel Elementary schools. Like my husband and I, many parents with young children are moving here to raise their families in this tight-knit, walkable community anchored by Carmel Elementary. It's an honor to be here alongside Kyle Ring, Justin Moffett, and so many others representing our hard-working team of Carmel Elementary parents and advocates. To our interim co-superintendents and school board, we appreciate your open minds and listening ears as we express what makes our community unique and what we need to continue to flourish. You have a complicated task before you as you sift through the many layers of data and input to determine the best way forward in regard to facilities. We look forward to working with the school board on negotiating a resolution to the challenge of school population while keeping Carmel Elementary open.
Tommy Taiwo.
Hi, my name is Tommy Taiwo, and I'm a senior for the Carmel Women's Basketball Varsity Team. We're gathered here today to grasp an understanding of what warranted Coach Winland getting fired. We're standing here because me, along with others, want answers regarding what happened last Friday. Last Monday, we were all reassured that Coach Winland was keeping his position as the Carmel Women's Basketball Head Coach. But all of that changed when we received an email last Friday saying that he would be fired. Honestly, Carmel High School is my third high school in four years, and I didn't know what to expect coming into a basketball program of a new school with over 5,000 students. But one thing was for sure. Coach Winland is the best high school coach I've ever had, and he made me feel right at home from the first day I walked in through that door. There's something different about his competitive nature and his passion toward winning, and his charisma toward the players that resembles a fatherly figure. He always talks about how he is with us players way more than his own kids, whether it be his own kids being at softball games or other basketball games. When there are bad or slick roads, he asks each and every one of us to text him saying that we made it home safely. He hosts taco night, so then we can have team bonding. And if we ever need to rant to him or vent to him, he always has time to hear what we have to say. All these examples say a lot about his character on and off the court, and how much he truly cares about the program as a whole. But who's next? You've heard other players say that their coaches are dealing with the same thing as Coach Winland. We need a change. We need a revolution. This is not just for Coach Winland. This is for all the current and future coaches and other programs that are dealing with the same thing. Students and players need stability, and coaches need security. I hope you could have some sort of reconsideration about the whole process, or at least give us some answers. Thank you.
Virginia Ranley.
I know.
Time is up, but because of the excessive, we don't want to deny the last two people an opportunity to share their comments. Please go ahead.
Okay. My name is Virginia Ranley. I live at 1201 East 106th Street in the Home Place neighborhood. My kids are not yet of school age. I have two preschool girls. But we have done the tour at Orchard Park and received early intervention services there and have had nothing but amazing positive experiences with all the staff there. But as may become a theme in this process, it feels that our Home Place community and the surrounding neighborhoods may not be as organized or well-resourced, but the stakes are certainly high in our neighborhood. We moved to Home Place for its unique character, including the history and the diversity. Like many other people, my neighbors, we live there because of the walkability and the bikeability of the neighborhood and being able to walk and bike to school. And how we've used the grounds and the playground thus far is incredibly important to us. We love that our kids would get the, before we were Carmel, we love that we would get the high-quality education through the Carmel Clay School systems, but that we would also be in a school that represented the diversity and the character of our neighborhood. And we're incredibly sad at the thought of that being dissolved. The most recent statistic from Principal Turner, there are actually 31 languages spoken at home of Orchard Park families. Which brings me to the question and the thought of whether or not all the right people have been consulted considering language barriers and considering whether the right people are in the room, that this is not just a financial decision, but that it's impacting the lives of people who may not have the resources to drive an extra mile and a half. So have we asked the questions of if these kids miss the bus, are there two cars in that family to get the kids to school if they miss the bus? Are we looking at the Title I resources and the way it will impact disadvantaged communities?
Matt Mylan.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Matt Mylan. I live at 1443 Orchard Park North Drive, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46280. I'm the president of Orchard Park Neighborhood. My son and daughter both went to Orchard Park. My son built his Eagle Project at Orchard Park. There are many great teachers there, and among many of the different awards that were won by Orchard Park. I would highly suggest to this board do some more research on this decision before you just pull the plug and tear down a school or close a school, and also the other school, too. But this ought to be a carefully researched topic before you just have a knee-jerk reaction and close two schools. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, for taking an opportunity to join us for public comments this evening. And with that, we move into the next item on our agenda, which is consent. We have a motion to approve consent.
I'm sorry. So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of consent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have action. And to that, we turn to Dr. Dudley for the agenda.
Thank you. So this evening, I am bringing to the board the calendars for the 2019-20 and 2020-21 school year. As you'll recall, back in October, you approved the calendar for the 2018-19 school year. And these are the other two years out past that, so we'll have three years of calendars. As I presented in our last meeting, the calendar really has not changed very much. This was based on a recommendation from a committee of stakeholders that looked at feedback from all of our stakeholders in the district. And the one change that is similar to what our 18-19 calendar is, is that fall break is on a Thursday, Friday, rather than a Friday, Monday. Other than that, the calendar is very similar in the dates.
Thank you, Dr. Dudley. Dr. Dudley's proposed, based on the committee, the 2019-20 and 2021 calendars. May I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Pam, looks like you might have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm just wanting to know, since we are ending school so close to Memorial Day, will that interfere with graduation?
Graduation gets set after the calendars, so it just all depends on, some years we end before Memorial Day, some years we end after Memorial Day, and then we find a date that the Coliseum is available that's surrounding that, that's after our last day of school.
I know, because one year we had an issue with us ending up really near Memorial Day. So that's why I was wondering. Okay, thank you.
I just want to say I thank you, I don't know if "thank you" is the right word, but for the Wednesday of Thanksgiving week that we are continuing that. Did you have Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday off? So I approve.
And that was very much, the community, very important to the community to have that Wednesday. Continue having that Wednesday.
And if I'm not mistaken, there were some other big ideas that came out of the thought exchange. Finishing the semester by, before winter break.
Yes.
So finals were before winter break. There were a couple of things in that, and I'm hoping maybe you could quickly touch on it. There were some discussion on school start times.
Yes.
So could you touch on that for us?
Yes. In the thought exchange, we did have community members share about the school thought, or the school start times. And we did have quite a few thoughts that were about starting the secondary schools later and starting the elementary schools earlier. Even though that was not the charge of the calendar committee, in thought exchange, they're very open-ended questions, and so we had the opportunity to hear the thoughts of the community that we can use as we look further into scheduling.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Katie?
Can you also touch on the balanced calendar? That was brought up, too, on that thought exchange.
Yes. We did have some thoughts on the balanced calendar, but it was very clear that the majority of our stakeholders wanted to stay with a traditional calendar and not move towards that balanced calendar.
Mike?
And I know in the past, we've done three years at a time and waited till we've gotten closer to the end of the third. I know we've had some discussion about putting the calendars further out as we get closer to them. Is that in the plan works, or?
Yes. I mean, that is something, you know, as we can look at to start, we could turn around and have another calendar committee next year and do another three years. The only caution I would have to that is, as things change with the legislature, it has not, but it's always been a hot topic. And I would hate to put something out there that's so far out and then us having to turn around based on the possible legislation.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't imply that we'd have six years going out. I would just be, so that people could plan, that it would be a rolling, you know, whatever, two or three always out there.
Sure.
Pam?
Yes, just a thought. I know that the school day was also part of the elementary program evaluation, and aren't we going to be presenting that in May to?
No. You mean, changing the school day, the start and end times?
The elementary program evaluation.
Right. As we're looking at the recommendations from the elementary program recommendations, one, it wasn't a possibility, one of the possibilities would be, did you need to lengthen the day? But that would be, will take next year to really look at how we might operationalize that. So there would be no change for this coming year, and that would not come in May.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of supporting the two proposed calendars for 2019-20 and 2020-21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next discussion topic is Carmel Clay Public Library Board appointment. And to that, we'll turn to Mr. McMichael.
Okay, this evening, we're recommending that the board appoint Ms. Stephanie Furman to complete the partial term of the vacant position of the Carmel Public Library. This term will expire on June 30th, 2020. The school board actually makes three appointments to this board. And due to the recent passing of Dr. Winvega, it's necessary to fill the remainder of his term. Mr. Bob Swainy, who many of you I know have met, the new library director, has contacted us, and he very much is recommending and supports this recommendation.
Thank you, Roger. I open up the floor to discussion. Well, I know I've got a couple of questions. We have our three. How do they communicate with our schools? How do they serve the needs of the school? I know we have a really strong relationship with the library, and I know they look to us for appointments.
Yes.
Can you talk to me a bit about that?
Yes, we, one member I know has been an appointee for 16 years. And so I believe this will be her last term, if you will, because there's, I believe that's the maximum that she would serve. So we have, the members have been rather longstanding as far as the appointments. We do not interact routinely with the board. Our interaction is much more so with the director. And so, but we do feel that we've been well-served by the individuals that have been appointed. They're very dedicated to serving on the board, and they're otherwise active in the community and other areas as well.
Thank you. I do know that we had had a phone call. Somebody seen that that was open, and they're very much interested in a future appointment. So, and I did share that with the board, and so we will work with that in the future. Any other questions about the relationship or the appointment at this time? Okay, so then we'll look to this to come back in May?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds fantastic. Thank you very much, Roger. Next on the agenda, we have the monthly financial report. That would be Roger.
Okay, we'll see if we can get this up. Okay, so. Okay, so we're just beginning the first, ending the first quarter of the year, so our balances and so forth are what we projected. You can see that our ending cash balances continues to decline. That's very anticipated and typical, primarily because most of our expenses in our general fund and referendum fund are salary and benefits, so they occur very regularly every two weeks as we pay people, of course. But really, a significant portion, about 17% of our revenue, comes from our local referendum that was recently renewed. And so, since that, the referendum comes from property tax rather than from state taxes, and therefore, we receive the majority of those funds in May and November as people pay their taxes. So next month, we will continue to go down, but then after that, we'll start getting what we would refer to as early draws from the taxpayers as they begin to pay their tax bill, and so then you'll see the balances begin to go back up. If you were to compare where we're at this year with last year, you would see, you know, a fairly significant decline in our operating balance. That, too, was anticipated. And some of this information the board's heard before, but for benefit of the public, last year, when teacher contracts and others, primarily teacher contracts were settled, they were, there was retro pay involved in that, and so we anticipated that, but nevertheless, that had the balances higher than what they would have been had we settled those contracts timely. And then with the settlement of the current contract, we also provided for a stipend for teachers, and so that also contributed to the balance that we have remaining. And again, that was planned and a thoughtful decision. So as I said, we're really right on target in terms of what our projections have been.
Thank you, Roger. I open up the Florida discussion or questions? Pam?
Yes. Since our operating balance is going down, our ending cash balance, where do you see our cash balance next month?
Probably be about $200,000, and again, that's about where we would anticipate. From a cash flow standpoint, what happens if we, if this fund were to drop into a negative, that wouldn't be unheard of, and because of the cash flow of the revenue, or the, you know, the flow of the revenue. And what we'd do in that case, we would then do what's called inter-fund loans, and we would loan money from, like, our debt service fund and the cash balance there, because as you know, the money is, our funds are in separate accounts, separate funds. And so those loans all have to be repaid by the end of the year. In this case, they would likely be repaid by May and June after we received the property tax. And then we'll start that routine again from between July 1st and December 31st.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Great. Well, thank you very much, Roger.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have our superintendent reports, and I think the two of you have some material to share.
We do.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So we had the pleasure last week of surprising 25 outstanding teachers who were selected as the Teacher of the Year semifinalists for Carmel Clay Schools, and these educators will be recognized at a banquet this Thursday, April 26th. And at that ceremony, one of our teachers will be selected to represent Carmel Clay Schools at the Indiana Department of Education's Teacher of the Year Program. So we're very excited that we have just so many outstanding teachers in our district. Also, congratulations to Carmel High School Tech Hounds, who won the state championship at the Indiana First Robotics Competition, and we wish them the best of luck as they compete at Worlds in Detroit, April 25th, so later this week.
And I'd like to make some comments this evening relative to the meetings that we have started with in relationship to school facilities. Many of you here for that reason. I'd first want to emphasize that the meetings that we have had thus far are just the beginning of really discussion, and I appreciate how some of the community members feel, and I think I know why, because of the information presented and so forth, but there really are no decisions. We've not made a decision to close any schools. We really just began a discussion. At the same time, I'm not assuring anybody that there won't be a recommendation to close a school, but that is not where we're at now. And so, one way or another, as a public entity, we need to have discussion about this issue. And the alternative is to not have discussion, which I don't, I know that's not what community members want. And so if I were a community member affected by a school, and I thought that there was a proposal to close or that that was the plan, I'd be upset as well. And that's kind of the whole point. And so, but that is not what we're talking about. We're talking about discussing the, our school facilities. Orchard Park and Carmel Elementary, you know, were kind of highlighted because they happen to be the two schools, Orchard Park first, that's due for major innovation. And so it's not a matter that one or two or both of these schools are closed. It really is a part of, part of the, beginning of the conversation, that first recognizes that Orchard Park first is due on our schedule to have major innovations, and so naturally, we would not want to recommend spending millions of dollars on a school if we were going to close it. And so it's necessary to have those conversations. At the same time, we know that we are, our schools, our elementary schools are at capacity on the west side of Carmel, and that we have, we do have four schools on the west side and seven schools on the east side as far as Meridian. And it's not a matter whether that's the dividing line, or if it's more in the middle or Keeson or whatever, but the fact is, is that we have, surprising to many people, is we do have a declining elementary enrollment, and when you see all the construction, that might surprise people. It's not major at this point, but our enrollment peaked in 2011, and it's been declining overall. It's declined over 200 students since then, and the demographer has projected that that will continue. Now, having said that, once we get past right now, everything else is projection. And so I've never seen a projection yet that's 100% accurate, and even the best demographers would be quick to point that out. And so it becomes, initially, it becomes more a matter of, is the trend correct? And are we trending down? Are we trending up or about the same? And there was information this evening about it's more than just building permits, and that's correct. And I don't know all the specifics of what the demographer goes through to make their projections, but I know they know a lot more about it than I do. And so we will have that study updated. It was done in 2016, and so given what we're talking about, obviously, the enrollment, both current as well as projection, becomes, you know, meaningful information in this conversation. And so we will have that updated this fall. We'll wait till our count day, which is the middle of September, because that'll be the very most recent count of students, and then that study will be updated. All this information, of course, will be, and is made public. We are developing a section on our website to give opportunity for public comment, but also another area that, and it'll all be there together, where community members can also ask questions and expect an answer back. So in some cases, people will just want to make a comment. Other cases, they'll have questions. And then all of the information that we compile will be added to that so that, as some of you've said, if, you know, you may not be able to make it to a meeting, or the meeting was called without adequate notice, or you had something else planned. So we're really trying to, and I would tell you that I'm personally trying to get as much information as I can. You know, it's not my, I'm a community member, certainly, but it's, you know, we have 100,000 people in this community. And as I've said before, our schools affect all of us. Certainly affects parents that are currently in school, affects grandparents who had grandchildren in school. It also affects developers, property owners, everybody that I can think of should care about this discussion. And not just two elementary schools. We have 11. And so I doubt that we're going to have a conversation about closing a school on the west side since we just built them, you know, not too long ago. And so, but certainly, you know, we have 11 schools, not two. And so comments that I heard at Orchard Park, for example, were very helpful to me. That's one of the reasons why I want the meeting. And that was the first of the five scheduled meetings. So if we need 10, we'll have 10. And if we need to go back to Orchard Park, we'll go back to Orchard Park. So when we're finished, I don't believe that you'll make comments about lack of notice, and I'm not disputing whether there was lack of notice at this point, which is why if we'll have another meeting, need to have another meeting, we'll do that. So I appreciate you all coming. I would really like it, honestly, if you'd bring your friends and anybody else you can think of that lives in this community, because this is your public schools. And I appreciate that you are passionate about them. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. I know you'd been talking about having a designated place on our website.
Yes.
With the demographic study, with the presentations, with other data. Do you have an idea of when that will be so we can use that as a resource and redirect? Because we have been getting a number of emails, and very thoughtful, very thoughtful emails, and we want to be sure that we can share appropriate, adequate information as well.
Yes, and some of the information is on the website, but you'd just be lucky if you could find it. And so to answer your question, we're really intending to get that information put up there by the middle of this weekend. And so, and again, some of it's there, but we're going to put it in a very prominent place so you don't have to search around to find it. And again, we should have that in just a matter of a few days. And then we'll add to that, you know, because when I was at Orchard Park, those of you and I'd encourage you to come to, on the 25th this week, to Carmel Elementary School, and you'll hear a little different presentation, because, you know, I do learn things when I, you know, we have a meeting, and so heard some very good suggestions. And so, you know, some of those suggestions will be included in my information that I share this Wednesday, I guess, the 25th. And so, and then there'll be three other meetings that are already scheduled, one at each middle school. As I said, if we need more meetings after that, we'll have more meetings. Now, those are kind of the public meetings. In the meantime, I'm also reaching out to developers. One of the gentlemen said, you know, he was, I believe, president of the homeowners association. I want to talk to homeowners association people. Not really anybody I wouldn't want to talk to, but what I would emphasize is, is this discussion affects all the people in this community. And it's very, you know, it's not, it's very easy, you might say, to reach out to our staff, because we have all the names and emails and so forth, and likewise with parents, and the parents that have kids currently in school. But as many of you said this evening, and you're right, of course, this isn't just a parent issue, it's a grandparent issue. And, you know, people move here because they want to live in areas that have, you know, young children. And I've received emails that said, you know, we didn't move to Florida because, you know, we wanted to be in a vibrant community with a variety of ages and all of that. So it matters to people for lots of different reasons. And so we're going to consider, I'm going to consider all of that, and as I said, I do not, it is my responsibility to make recommendations related to facilities, and I intend to do that. I do not intend to do it in a hurried sort of way, and I'm certainly not going to do it in any kind of non-transparent way. That's really the kind of the choices. We either discuss it, or I just pop up with a recommendation. I don't think that's what you want. And that's not what I would want to do, not, would not do. So we'll kind of work through the discussion part, and I think, I believe that the outcome will be, you know, much more positive than some people may feel right now, which isn't to say that everybody will be happy, but I think we'll have the vast majority of people that will continue to support the schools and, most importantly, our school board that we elected, and they are thoughtful people, and they'll continue to be that way.
One last question about the designated spot on the website. Will it also include the link to ask additional questions and share comments?
Yes, there'll be really two things. One is, is there will be an ability to make comments, and then there'll be another link to ask questions, basically, so that we can keep the questions separated from the comments, because we do want, and you will hear back. It may take a while, depending on how many questions, but we will respond to those just as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Roger. Other questions from the board? Katie?
Do you have the dates handy for the middle school meetings?
You know what? I wrote down the dates, but now I can't remember which school's which, but the middle school meetings will be on May 1st, May 3rd, and May 7th, which is a Monday.
May 1st is Friday.
And Clay's, Clay's May 1st?
May, Creekside is on the 3rd.
Creekside the 3rd, and then Carmel on the 7th.
The 2nd, Creekside. No. May 3rd.
No. 3rd. We skipped the 2nd. Somebody, somebody was busy. First, 3rd, and 7th.
So the first is Clay Middle?
Yep.
The third is Creekside Middle?
Creekside.
And Carmel Middle is on the 7th?
Correct.
And what time?
6:30.
6:30.
All these meetings are, at this point, are 6:30.
Great. Thank you.
Bring your neighbors.
Questions? Okay. Well, then, next on the agenda, we have the legislative update, and to that, we turn to Mr. Kirschner.
There is no legislative report this month.
And moving right along, we have the superintendent search update, and to that, we turn to Mr. Kirschner.
Thank you. As the board knows, but so this is ready for the public, we received a number of highly-qualified applicants, and we are working through the search process with the goal of having a new superintendent in place by July 1st.
Fantastic. Thank you. And seeing that we have no other items on the agenda, meeting is turned.